All right. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Board of Selectmen's meeting of June 14th. I'm sorry, June 15th of 2020. If you can, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you all. All right. Any public announcements? Ken, anything?
Um, no, it's a town meeting. Election coming up, but other than that, that's it.
Okay, thank you. Tim?
No.
No, Kevin?
Uh, you just want to remind people it's still early voting by mail and absentee voting. Um, early voting by mail. Um, the absentee voting, the last day to do that is noon time on Monday coming up. I don't know the numbers on how many voted, but I know last week it was over 150.
Jim, you have anything?
I have nothing.
Okay, thank you. All right, uh, action discussion items. Vote to approve the minutes of June 4th, 2020. Make a mo- motion to approve the minutes of June 4th, 2020.
That was that special Thursday night meeting. Is that the one that was? I think so.
Yeah, that was the Baker, Governor Baker's policy.
Yeah, I'll second that motion.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed? No, unanimous. Thank you. Um, again, vote to approve the minutes of June 8th, 2020. Make a motion to approve the minutes of June 8th, 2020.
Seconded.
A second. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Opposed? Okay, unanimous.
Can I ask a question about, um, if any additional restaurants have requested, um, outside dining? I know that, um, we're going to be emailed or notified, but just what's on the list here? Is that it?
Okay, nobody else has come yet.
Okay, thank you.
All righty, number, action number two, vote on reappointments to boards committees.
Um, I have a question. There's two vacancies in the Community Preservation Committee. Are those, um, up? Just, um, citizens at large appointments, or are they, you know, are they, you know, the commission member or, um, park and rec member? Do we know? I'm assuming they're just citizens at large, but...
I do not know of the makeup of the boards and committees now.
Just if, after the, after we vote tonight, maybe whatever positions are left open, we can, uh, you know, let people know. So, uh, put it on the agenda for the next meeting, and then we can find out if those vacancies are...
Yeah, yeah, and I believe we got a couple last minute, um, that we would be happy to put on next week, too.
So it looks according to this, I mean, if it's accurate, there'll be two openings on the Community Preservation Committee. I'm assuming they're citizens and then one full voting member, the zoning board of appeals, I believe, so, um...
I, I also believe that there were two people up for Conservation Commission, and one of them did not want to renew. So I believe there may be an opening there. Kathy Creighton did not want to renew her, her appointment.
All right, so well, we can research that in just the next meeting, you know?
I know that, um, Nancy did say, I believe that, you know, she sent the message out. And, um, some people did ex- express interest in renewing, but they just haven't gotten their paperboard back yet also.
Okay.
And then some people waited till Friday at noon time, like myself, to, uh...
We got a committee for you, don't you worry.
And there's a couple vacancies for you, don't worry, another week or so.
All right, so do we want to, um, you want to vote on the ones that said that they wanted to, um, get reappointed? You want to do, why each, each, um, one at a time, or?
Well, I'd make a, I'd make a motion to, uh, to approve the reappointments listed on the, uh, on this piece of paper that we have, with the exception of the Historical Commission and the Summer Concerts Committee.
I'll second that.
Okay, any further discussion? If not, all those in favor of doing that as a reappointment, signify by saying aye. Aye? All right, opposed? No, unanimous.
Um, two things. One is the Surplus School Building Committee. I know we just voted that, but that may, may not be needed anymore. They need to give their final recommendations, but it's probably a good idea to keep it because we haven't acted, the board hasn't acted on their final recommendations, so I think it's good to keep that committee. The other two things that I held off was the Historical Commission, which I am reapplying for in the Summer Concerts, which, um, I will note that I am a member, but I am the Board of Selectmen's Liaison on that. So, I mean, I would like to continue on that committee, but if, obviously, if you want to hold off on that till after the election, if somebody wants to, you know, um, I would prefer to be on there. I've done it for nine years now, but, um, you know, that, that's, that's the board now, or the, or the future board's decision, I would say, but...
You're not the liaison for the Historical Commission, right? You're just a member of it?
Yes, I've been a member for probably 15 years, yes.
All right, I'm making a motion to reappoint Ken Coyle to the Historical Commission.
Seconded.
Second, okay. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye? Opposed? abstained? There you go, abstained. Um, the Summer Concert, Ken, you're saying that you're select, you're appointed because of being selectman?
I think there's supposed to be a member of the Selectmen, or it's, it's appointee on that board. And then when I first joined the Board of Selectmen, I was, you know, I volunteered to do it, and of course, you know, being in the committee, I go, okay, go ahead, you know? So I've been doing it now for nine years, so, uh...
Do we want to, do we want to hold off on that, or do we want to?
Do we know for sure if it's a, selectman has to be on the board, or it's just an appointee?
It, it's called a Board Selectman Designee, I think, so, I don't know.
But that doesn't mean it has to be a selectman, right?
No, not if it says designee.
So, I mean, Jan Prowl does a great job.
Yeah.
He can on it too, but I mean, I, I get it, it was a, it's just a designee on the...
I mean, if you find out that it's not a designee, I will step down, so one of you guys can, uh, join it.
Well, I'll make a motion to, to reappoint, uh, Jan Prowl and Ken Coyle to the Summer Concerts Committee.
Okay, Jan, Jan, I think we already did, so let's just through Ken.
We, we... No, I excluded, I excluded Summer Concerts from, in my original...
Oh, okay, right, right, yep, okay, yep.
I seconded, uh, Kevin's motion.
Okay, any further discussion? All righty, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye? Opposed? Abstained?
Thank you.
All righty. Let's see, vote on commercial garage license renewals. Um, again, inspections were unable to be completed at this time due to COVID-19. Can we table it?
No, no, I think we have to renew their licenses, but, um, you know, I've, I've been assured by, you know, that we've not had complaints or issues or any problems with these folks in the past, but I think it, it, the license, if it's, if it's due to expire, we should just renew them. And, um, you know, if there's, when it's time and, and the inspectors can get back out there and go in, if there is an issue, it'll be brought to our attention, and we can have a, um, show cause hearing, or we can revoke or suspend their licenses we need, as we need to.
All right, I'll take a motion.
Not want to put anybody in a situation where they're operating without a valid license.
Okay. I, I, I'd entertain a motion, at least on the first page, from A&amp;J Equipment and Repair, Inc., down to South Shore Cycle Parts, um, to vote to approve commercial garage renewal.
I'll make a motion, the vote, I'll make a motion to approve the commercial garage licenses renewals, uh, from AJ Equipment Repair, Inc., to South Shore Cycle Parts.
And you want, you want, you want to add to that motion pending receipt of all paperwork and up-to-date tax payments, so...
And inspections.
Yep, pending receipt of all paperwork and up-to-date tax payments and inspections when allowed.
Second.
Second that motion.
Oh, okay, we have two seconds. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Opposed? Page unanimous. I'll entertain a motion on the second page from, uh, Speedy Oil, down to Whitman Body Works, Inc.
Uh, I'll make a motion to approve the attached, that's a commercial garage license renewals, pending receipt of all paperwork and up-to-date tax payments and inspections when possible, for Speedy Oil, down to Whitman Body Works, Inc.
Second. Second, okay, any further discussion? All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye? Opposed? All righty. Unanimous. All right, for discussion and partial vote on recommendation on town meeting warrant articles. Scott, under Article 1, can you explain for the public about what's listed under selectman's salary? What that money pays for?
Um, it would pay for my expenses, the expenses of, um, or my salary, the, uh, office expenses that are related to it, uh, including, um, the administrative assistant, and any other expenses that would go along with your office, the office of the selectman.
I appreciate it. Some people see that selectman's salary and think, oh, I'm getting paid.
No, you know, yeah, the selectmen, um, do not get paid. You're all volunteers.
What? 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 Come out of here.
Yeah, um, sorry, I, I, I think somebody should have told you that many years ago.
I've been waiting for two years on my mailbox.
One more year, just wait.
Do we, uh, do we get the health insurance?
I think we just lost some candidates, too.
And that, um, that Board of Selectmen budget is actually a decrease of, there are almost $40,000, correct?
Yeah. Um, it's, it is a decrease of 20 something thousand dollars.
It's an increase?
Requested, and, um, about 60,000 over 2020.
Decrease, right?
Decrease. The selectman's salary, there was a decrease in that line item.
Right, yep.
Okay. Um, can you speak to the increase in the Council on Aging salaries? I got a couple questions.
Salaries that are in here that have any increases would be contractual obligations, um, for the most part. The, what you see here in, in this all of article, um, you know, Article 1 of this budget, is, um, you know, we, we had contractual obligations, whether it be if they were in a, a management union, or just, um, any other union salaries throughout the department, or the ones who were not, the few people that were not in a management union salaries would have had an increase, just commensurate with what everybody else's salary increase was. Other than that, we did everything we, um, any positions that were new. Um, I know you had, we had a couple that had been thought of in the original version of this budget, and we, uh, took those right out, uh, when, once the, um, once I came on and we realized that we weren't going to get as much state aid as we thought we were going to get. So, uh, positions, any extra positions, including over in the school area, that, you know, positions that they were hoping to have, that didn't already exist, were all eliminated. So there is any, uh, there is a hiring freeze in place, as you know, and a spending freeze in place. So really, any increases were just minimal, whatever that we absolutely needed to do.
Uh, I, I see that in pretty much every budget, and I commend, well, actually, the budget, but in the Council on Aging Salaries, there's an increase of like $31,000, and I was questioned on that. I just don't know if someone went from part-time to a full-time position, or if there's...
Wasn't that, didn't, didn't Rick talk about that prior? He was going to give a, a raise? Um, I wonder, is that still in there, or was that cut out because of the funding?
Is this over in the Council on Agings?
Yeah, it's, it's 30, like a $31,000 increase.
It, it's, I don't think it was a raise, but it might, it was an additional part-time position that was put in over there?
That's what I thought.
I believe that's what, uh, the explanation that I got was.
Okay.
And that, again, um, anything we looked at, it was still, you know, we were, we're pretty much bare bones, as, as you guys know, um, as far as staffing goes, so I, I don't, you know, we did everything we could to avoid, in this budget, having any, um, furloughs or any layoffs. We, we should be able to continue to provide the services to the town that we've been providing.
That would be great if that's another part-time position, because that's, they've been needing that for years and want to stay open later, so that would be, that's great.
So you're saying as a selectman moving on, that you're going to have the CSN to stay open later, Kevin? Is that what I heard you say?
I'd love to see it stay open later.
I just wanted to make sure you're on record, yeah, that's...
I just want to see it open.
That's, that's another good point.
But they need some, they need some customers to be able to...
Scott, Scott, I don't want, I don't want you to think I'm out of the loop, but I am a little bit now. The school department, I mean, how does it look going into next year? I hear a lot of towns, um, giving layoff notices, but they may not actually be laid off. What's the plan in Abington? But, I mean, it looks like their budget, they have a slight increase in the budget, so hopefully, you know?
Well, they, I mean, the problem is, is there's mandated, um, requirements that they have. So, yeah, there is a, you know, there's a slight increase, there's contractual obligations. There was a, um, a series of positions, um, I think it was almost seven positions that they opted not to fill. Um, and, and they may have to, they may, um, you know, some, depending on what happens next year, maybe we can do it then. I imagine there's a, a good amount of, um, of teacher, um, with a paraprofessionals, or, I can't remember the term for it, but there's probably a, a good amount of them that they're not bringing back right now. Um, hopefully, they'll be able to bring it back. I, you know, I think that, right now, what we were estimating was that the Chapter 70 money wouldn't decrease the way that we expect the unrestricted government aid to decrease, but there will be a decrease, and they'll probably, I think my biggest fear and my biggest expectation would be what's coming, um, next year, um, even more so than this year, because obviously, the revenues are just not going to be coming in even after July.
Um, in the school budget, the full-day kindergarten is blank. Is that because it's self-funding, or is that included in the school department budget? I know the first year, we had to, we had to take money, then you're going to be reimbursed for the following year, because we just started that, I think, last year, if I remember correctly, but I just don't know how that worked.
It'd be great.
I, I don't know what the answer, I don't know, were you fee-based up in, on that? Was it?
Yeah, they used to, they used to pay a fee, and then we voted to give them the money for, was what, Ken, 400 and...
Something like that, but only for year one, and then we'll be reimbursed every year from the state, I thought, something like that.
Yeah.
That sounds familiar.
Reimbursed. Yeah, it looks like you did put a pretty good, uh, chunk, you know, into the operating budget, which is probably what you would have done if it wasn't going to be fee-based, but, again, um, you know, reimbursed. You don't know where they're going to be next year. We're hopeful, but...
Yeah, that full-day kindergarten was like a grant thing, right? It wasn't a reimbursement. At least, that's what they said, I am.
Positions added? We're, we're adding a, a public health nurse now? Is that what that is?
That was, yeah, that was money that we had normally used. We had paid through Water Health, um, most of it had come out of, um, we paid to, uh, South Shore Visiting Nurse Association. Uh, we did have to take some and, and add a little bit to cover the remaining cost, but it is, especially now, um, an extremely important position, and like I said, uh, we kept it as a part-time position, so it's non-benefit eligible. Um, we were lucky, actually, we found someone who was very interested in it. Uh, I believe we're onboarding that person. Um, there's a lot, every, every city and town around us is sort of in the same position. Some are reaching out to try and do, um, mutual partnerships and stuff, um, but nobody's really got their act together on it, so we were pretty lucky that we've, we actually had a resident who we ended up...
And the town planner is out the window for this year, right, obviously?
Yeah, unfortunately, the town planner, uh, position, we won't be able to fill it, 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 yeah, definitely not this year.
And I see the recreation budget going down. Is that because there's no camp this year? Is that what I'm understanding?
Yeah, uh, it's not looking like there'll be any camp going on, no.
Okay. I think that, that's all I have from the, on the...
I got a question about snow and ice removal. I see it hasn't changed. Um, yet every year, we're looking for more money to play catch-up. How come we never increased that?
I don't know why you've never increased it in the past. Um, I do know you don't want to decrease it, that's for sure. Um, you certainly, you know, could make a, a fair estimate of it. I didn't want to go making any recommendations on it this year, seeing as we're cutting, uh, pretty much everywhere. So, it, you know, it's one of the few areas that you're automatically allowed to deficit spend, and then you can grab that free cash each year and pay that bill first. Um, I would, I, you know, I kind of had the same, uh, discussion with the Finance Committee in, in my own town in Whitman, that I kind of thought we ought to get a little bit closer to, you know, um, what a, a realistic number is for it, but it's very difficult. It's throwing, you know, if you ask the DPW director, he'll probably say it was like throwing darts at the dartboard. Every year's different, and you don't know, I mean, some years, like, you know, we didn't get any snow, but you still had to put ice melt down, or you had to do the salt thing. You might not have had to do the plows, and, you know, and other years, maybe you don't have to do anything, but it is something that, you know, when we go into next year's, um, budget cycle, uh, we're looking at everything, and we're going to be taking a lot of different things into consideration. And unfortunately, it's going to start earlier than, it seems like this one's dragged out.
Jim, I'm, I'm sure Tom can agree on this, but that's something that's always, every year for the last 20, 30, 40 years, um, actually, I think it has gone up a little bit. I think, I remember it being 40,000 total, but, um, um, it's something that you don't really want to tax the citizens on something that you don't know what the number is. You know, because you could say it's 200,000, it averages 200,000 a year, and you charge them 200,000. We have a lean year, and you've just overcharged the residents of the town. So I think that was the original thought behind it, but I agree with you, we should, we should build it up 10,000 each year, until you get to, what, 100,000, just so, but, you know, it, like...
If I'm not mistaken, I think we're, town meeting, we're voting 160,000 to pay last year's bill, and last year was a pretty mild winter.
1, 160 is a very low number.
And can we ever go the last five or 10 years and see what that number is, you know, moving forward?
Yeah, I mean, it's certainly worth looking at. Um, like I said, I mean, you know, I, that's kind of the approach that I was taking over in Whitman, the same way. It's, it's, you know, let's, let's try and get a little bit closer. But the other part of it is, is, you know, if we had it at, at three and a quarter, and it came in at 160, you just made free cash for next year, but we won't have it until, you know, you've kind of tied it up until sometime in June.
You're also, Jim, to be honest with you, you could, we could, well, you can't bump it up, but if we were to say 200,000 dollars, and that would mean a layoff, you know what I mean?
Yeah, well, we don't want that to happen. I'm just looking as a, as a taxpayer, you go, gee, how come, how come you're getting another 160,000 out of me? Why didn't you plan it a little better? You know? If, if someday they said, hey, we had 200,000, we only spent 100, we're putting 100,000 back in.
Yeah.
It's a double, it's a double-edged sword. It definitely is.
I would complain if you were to tax me 100,000 dollars, you know?
Yeah.
I mean, honestly.
On the other, on the other side, it was though, a mild winter, and we were putting in another 160,000. That's kind of a big number for a mild winter. I can imagine on other winters how much we're putting in.
Right, but you have to figure out how much saw, how much salt cost went up and say, you know, which, it's not in these figures, but that's what, we have to look at that, I think, so... Oh, I got... Anybody else? We want to vote our, our recommendations on the, the warrant articles or anything, or?
I mean, do we want to go article by article and just, and vote yes or no, or do we want to just? I don't think, I think we both not going to show up at town meeting, you know, I don't think.
Say that again, Ken?
Unless we disagree with the Finance Committee, and then we can just get up and say, you know, we disagree with the Finance Committee's recommendations. Usually, our, our recommendation might be printed in a book, let alone, but it's probably not going to happen, because it's a short notice. But I mean, I think we should just vote on each, each article, and we always have.
Yep, I don't think that's a bad idea.
So we just discussed Article 1, which is the town's budget.
The Affairs Committee recommends approval for every article in the warrants, correct? Unless I missed something?
Yeah, we, we finally got to a point where they, we, they agreed, and they voted on all of them.
They're pa, they're passing over on 10.
Um...
Unless they change the votes since this was printed. Also, number 21, passing over?
Yeah, 10 we're not ready for. And 21's also going to be, um, and, and, and that's going to come up at town meeting. Um, I believe 21 will be explained probably by Town Council, uh, and 10 will just, uh, a quick, you know, we're not going to do it yet. We're going to wait another year.
Is the petitioner, one, Article 21, my understanding?
Yeah, so, um, since the last time we all talked, I, I guess we've had the Finance Committee meeting, so everybody's in, including the petitioner, on Article 21. Um, that the intention and the way that we actually treat that enterprise account, that account, is an enterprise account. It was meant to be an enterprise account, but the, um, way that it was recorded last year, by changing the F to an E, by calling it a 53E, turned it into a revolving account, which it can't be. Um, and after an analysis by Town Council, um, and, and a look back at what actually transpired at town meeting last year, um, it, it, it does appear that that's all it was. It was just a minor, um, mistake. The intention all along was for it to be 53F, and that, that's something we can clear up by, not by using this article, but just by clearing it up. It wouldn't be F 53, 53F and 3/4, I think it'd be FD, uh, 53F and 1/2, because that's what we called it, was 53E and 1/2. Um, and 53F and 1/2 is what we have treated it like all along, which... Which, um, the. The petitioner, um, we've discussed what that means and the ramifications of that, meaning that, um. At the beginning of the year, we expect, um, uh, revenue estimate and a, uh, operating budget. Like any other department would do, although they are not. A department, they're not a town department, um, where we are essentially a pass-through, but they have to give us a list of expected expenses. Um, you know, salaries and, uh, revenues, and then that's what we'll put in, and that's what you'll see. Matter of fact, um, if you, if you flip back over into. Article one, we made those adjustments, um. You'll see on page six, page five and six, page five is the. Has, uh, at the bottom, the cable access enterprise fund expenses. And we reduced that number to two hundred and seventy thousand because they believe that, you know, that's. More in line with what the actual expenses are. And then if you go to, uh, line four sixty. That's what our actual, um, cable revenue anticipation is. Which is more in line with what we actually do receive from, uh, Comcast and Verizon. And what you see in there, that's six thousand nine hundred and fifteen, that is what goes into the general fund. Um, because those are the costs that the town has that's associated with managing this money for the cable company. So yes, we're, um, we went through it, um, in depth with town council. Uh, with the finance committee and with the petitioner, and everybody is all on board on it now.
Good. Okay, so do we want to do each one at, one at a time and, and just vote and get through it, or? Any other recommendation? I think that was Ken's recommendation. I, I wouldn't mind doing that just to.
Yeah, one at a time, I like it.
All right. Would I have to read the whole article?
No, we read it a million times and Scott doesn't want to read them also.
There you go. No, I did not. Um, so number one, vote on number one, article number one.
I'll make a motion to accept Article One as written, well, I don't even need to say Article One, re- recommend to, uh. In favor of Article One. I will note too, Scott, thanks, I appreciate having that enterprise fund listed, because before it wasn't listed for the, the. Cable access, so that's good, so people will know, you know, the money comes in and goes out, so that's good.
Yeah, no, it, it'd be nice to finally explain it once and for all and put it, put it to bed, I hope.
Okay, motion made on Article One, second?
Second.
All right, I, any further discussion? All right, all those in favor, aye? Aye, unanimous. Um, Article two, two. Transfer certified free cash sum of a hundred thousand.
Is this, is this a usual, do we do this every year? I don't recall.
Uh, I don't think you do, but what this is, is we want to, um. Again, like we said, the, you know, there, there was some concessions and quite a few made by the school committee and in our, um. Concern of what might happen, you know, you, you only know, we, you estimate you, um. You know, uh, have X amount of dollars set for the, um, any sort of special education that you have to take care of, and you never know. Until October, um, if a new student might move into the, uh, district. And if a new student, if we only, you know, what they went with is sort of what they actually know going into now, what they need. But if between now and October, another student moves in and has a, a program that we have to fulfill the needs for. Um, it gets pretty expensive. So we wanted to make sure that we did have that ability. Um, you know, that it would be in a fund that we can, you know, that the school would have access to, and then if not, um, if we're lucky and. Um. It doesn't happen, then it'll come back and we'll, you know, transfer it back into stabilization.
All right, so wouldn't go back, it, it just wouldn't go to the school squad if, if it was fifty thousand, we'd get fifty thousand back?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, because the public will want to understand that too, so. All right, uh, motion on Article two?
I'll make a motion that we approve Article two as written.
Okay. Second, any further discussion? All right, all those in favor, aye? Aye. Okay. Article one? All right, Article three? I have a quick question on, uh, I might have to call John about it. And on, uh, section F, the purchase and install waste oil furnace, is that the burn-up? Oil, waste oil or?
Yeah.
Is that for the, the townspeople or just for the town employees or?
That's, yeah, it's not just for anybody to come and dump their oil.
Okay. That's, that's their stuff.
Yeah.
Jim was saving up his oil, hoping the article would pass, but not.
Yeah, a lot of law laws, you know.
I'll make a motion to approve Article three as written.
Second.
Hey, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Article four?
I'll make a motion to approve Article four as written. And this is a new revolving fund for fees collected for public records requests.
Correct. As you can see, it's a fifty-three E and a half. We all know that that's a revolving fund now.
I'll second it.
I almost got it. I almost got it. We're, I second. Go ahead, Ken.
Um, where does the money go now? Goes right back into the general fund normally?
Um, yeah, I mean, if we were to, any of this money or anything, you know, obviously in excess of that, will just go into the general fund, yeah. But it, you know, there's a, uh, usually expenses that are associated with it.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye? Aye. Opposed? Eyes have it? All right, five? Community preservation budget?
Make a motion to approve Article five as written.
I'll second it.
Okay, any further discussion? Surprised they're taking down Beaver Brook Playground. I spent a week building that.
That's going to be taking it down, removing the trees and building a new playground.
I think so. All right, any further discussion?
I have one question. I don't know if anybody knows the answer on this, but the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, the hundred and fifty-three thousand, is that? The ten percent, is that, are they doing the minimum again, or?
I think it is this year, although I think it's a little over the ten percent.
Little over ten percent.
Need to get that raised in the future.
Absolutely.
Any other discussion? All right. Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye? Aye. Opposed? Eyes have it, six? Transfer ninety thousand certified free cash?
Make a motion to approve Article six as written.
And this is an increase in the, in the, uh, reserve fund that you talked about at one of the meetings, right?
Yeah, correct, um, really, this is, um, you know, more than you would, you, I believe you typically put in there, uh, and I believe there's. Forty or forty thousand, forty-five thousand in there now. Uh, but what this will allow us to do is if we do come up with, um, some shortfalls. Between now and when we have a town meeting, or if we do not, because of COVID-related issues. Have the ability to have a special town meeting. Um, and we need to access some funds, this will give us the ability to go to the finance committee. And, um, you know, plead a case there and, and, and they would have some funds that we could use.
I, I'll make a motion to approve Article six.
I'll second.
Hey, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye? Aye. Opposed? Unanimous?
If I can interrupt for one second, um, go back to the question that Tim asked about the ten percent on the CPA. I think ten percent's about forty thousand, so actually, um, that community housing is about. Uh, thirty thou- uh, thirty percent of this year, thirty-five percent of this year's. You know, so.
Thank you.
Okay, good.
Article seven, eight and nine are kind of going to be taken together, I believe, at town meeting.
Yeah, um, I, I, I guess these are things that. Typically do every year at town meeting, um, that you, um. Funds that you always put money into, so the idea was that it would just be consent agenda and one vote.
Okay, so I'll take a motion on Article seven, eight and nine all at once.
Make a motion to approve Article seven, eight and nine as written.
Just so people at home know, seven is the transportation, student transportation, again, all three of these articles go every year. Um, the Article eight is five thousand for health imperative for sexual assault and domestic violence. And Article nine is for the Act of the South Shore, the services provided to having residents with intellectual and developmental disabilities. Um, so these are articles we, we generally do every year, so. Sorry to interrupt you, Mr. Shamai.
Oh, that's okay. Short timer. Did somebody second the motion?
Not yet.
Second, okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye? Aye. Opposed? All right, unanimous?
Do we need a motion to pass over, or?
Article ten?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think the finance committee recommended that it be passed over, so you probably can vote the same.
Make a motion to take the finance committee's recommendation on Article ten for it to be passed over.
Do, do we know why it was passed over?
We just, uh, the, the DPW director just felt we, we weren't quite ready for it, um, you know, we'd rather wait another year when we can. You know, really get into it and afford it better.
And it could possibly be taken up at, at fall town meeting too, if.
Yeah, again, I mean, anything that we didn't do, if we feel as though we, we want to get it done, um, hopefully. Um, all things being equal, we'll be able to have a fall town meeting.
Hey, second on that? Jim, don't shake your head. I gotta hear you say yes if you're.
Anyone?
I'll second it.
Second, we've lost Jim's vocals.
Good.
Thank you, Tim.
Great. All right, uh, any further discussion? All those in favor, Article ten passing over, signify by saying aye? Aye. Opposed? The eyes have it, eleven?
That was.
It's the sewer main project, you definitely have to do that.
No, this is the one that's mandated by the state, right, Scott?
No, no, this is the sewer main.
That's one lane you're thinking of.
Yeah, that, that, that one was only two hundred and fifty thousand, that was back in, I think we did that with, uh, capital.
Oh, okay.
Make a motion to approve Article eleven as written.
Excuse me?
Sorry, Scott.
You got somewhere to go, I understand.
And this is, and this is fun, funded from the sewer bediment in the, uh, reserve fund account, like.
Uh, yeah, so we're, they'll end up pulling it out of there.
Or retained earnings or whatever they call it or something.
Second, anybody?
It's like pulling teeth tonight.
I'm pretty sure Jim's trying to second it.
I, I, it looks like he's trying to talk, or he's talking to someone else. I don't, I don't know.
Jim, hold up two fingers if you want to second it. There we go.
Jim seconded, okay. Kevin, uh, we gotta get somebody to fix his mic or something. I don't know what happened. Um, he doesn't look muted. Okay, um, any further discussion? If not, everybody signifies, signifies by saying aye? Aye, opposed? Yeah, all right, Jim. Unanimous, all right, twelve? This one we talked about, I think, in length last week, didn't we, about the security cameras and the entrance?
So twelve. Twelve, thirteen and fourteen are all going to be, uh, because we discussed short-term borrowing.
Right.
Um, but yeah, twelve. Uh, again, they don't have any security over in those two school buildings, so, you know, um. We definitely want to have something with, to keep people from just walking in.
Right, do we want to do, uh, twelve, thirteen and fourteen together because they are? It does say that to see the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds. Borrow or otherwise provide the fund, so. We're assuming that they're going to borrow, and I, I think they're, um, they've already talked about that. I wouldn't mind, I wouldn't mind, um, putting twelve, thirteen and fourteen together if somebody wants to recommend that, so.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve Article twelve, thirteen and fourteen as written. Article twelve. Uh, borrow twenty fifty thousand for security camera system at Beaverbrook, Article thirteen, raise and appropriate. I'm a hundred twenty thousand repair, place final site and police station, Article fourteen. Raise and appropriate some of a hundred sixty thousand repaired body and panel corrosion, repaint refurbished body and. Compartment door fixtures for three fire apparatus, as written.
Second.
Second.
Maybe that time?
Yeah, I don't know, Jim. Just moved up or something, holy Christmas.
I don't know what happened.
Any further discussion? Not any, uh, signify by saying aye? Aye? Opposed? Ken's opposed? Okay, Ken's opposed.
I'm opposed too, Tom.
Okay, so three, two, two. All right, uh, fifteen, Article fifteen.
Make a motion to, uh. Approve Article fifteen as written.
Fifteen is for purchase, five thousand dollars purchased equipment for Griffin's Dairy.
Yes, it'd be, uh. Raise and appropriate, and it, it'll probably be less than that, uh, they, it's just for the, a rider mower for them. And they do need it badly.
Okay, motion's made? Second?
I'll second that.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed, okay. Sixteen. Uh, transfer unused balance funds from ATM, repair of senior center roof. We've gone over this one a few times, fifty-two thousand and forty-eight thousand. Uh, that was all explained to us, I believe, so, uh, motion on Article sixteen.
Make a motion to approve Article sixteen as written.
I'll second that.
All right, Ken? Uh, any further discussion? If not, signify by saying aye? Aye. Opposed, the eyes have it. Uh, seventeen?
Scott, you, you explain what seventeen is, please?
So, um, actually seventeen, eighteen. Nineteen. Right down to twenty, for the most part, um. Those articles were put together by the treasure collector, these just give different. Um. It, it, it. Gives her more tools and, and better ability to deal with, uh, collections on people who are behind on, uh, taxes and whether. Uh, you know, on, on some cases, if it's just a very small amount, rather than fight them and chase them, we can let it. We could waive it, um, it also gives her the ability to get into, uh, payment plans. Uh, struck different types of structured plans, so it just gives her a little more flexibility than is otherwise allowed. Uh, and that's what all of these articles go towards.
I'd do the same thing, if we put eighteen, nineteen. I'm sorry, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen. And twenty? All is one to, you want to vote? All is one to, you want to vote approval on those?
I'll make a motion that we recommend approval of seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty.
Twenty-two, did you say, Ken?
Twenty also, yes.
Yep, okay, thanks.
I'll second it.
Second, okay, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye, aye, opposed, unanimous. All right, twenty-one. Uh, this one is gonna pass over. And it's been almost, it's been withdrawn by the petition, right, Scott, or?
Um, because there's multiple people on the petition, no, it'll be on there. They probably speak to it, but the overall recommendation is to pass it over and they won't have an issue with it.
Okay. Okay, so I'll make a motion that, um, we follow the Finance Committee's recommendation that the article be passed over.
I'll second that.
Can I amend that motion so that Jim Carlyle gets up and explains it too, why we're passing it over?
I'll let the petition explain it.
They're all night.
Let town council explain it.
There you go. Um, all right, any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye, aye, opposed. Unanimous. Again, another consent agenda, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five.
And these are all articles that require you, as a board, um, to have a public hearing, an open public hearing. They're all road acceptance articles. Um, we'd like to get it done. Obviously, we can't, but hopefully before a, um, a fall town meeting, we can pick those up again. But until you're able to actually have that public hearing, um, we can't, we cannot take action on them.
Now, Scott, on twenty-four is Crabtree Lane. Did that, I thought that didn't get, um, passed with, um, was it with planning board or?
They may not even have made their way through planning board either. They, they, it's quite possible that they submitted all of these petitions and was trying to, you know, track, go down both tracks at the same time. But, um, yeah, these, these may not even, they all have to go through approval from the planning board and then a, a public hearing and approval from you. So, yeah, it's quite possible that they haven't even finished with planning.
So even if we vote them, they're going to be on it.
Well, you, you can't vote them.
Yeah, they have to be on by petition, but.
Well, I mean, but you can't, I mean, you can't vote to approve them because you haven't been able to have, to take action that you have to take on it.
Okay.
Definitely would not want to vote to approve something that you may find yourself voting to not approve at a public hearing.
Oh, so we take the Finance Committee's recommendation?
You do, yeah, which I believe is just to pass it over.
Uh, no, it's, um.
They indefinitely postpone.
Right, yeah.
We, we, we stole that one, indefinitely postpone, I P.
I P. I like that. Motion on, um, all those articles? I made the motion to take the Finance Committee's recommendation to indefinitely postpone articles twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-five and to request the board of selectmen insert similar articles in the warrant for the next town meeting.
Second.
Okay, second, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye, aye, opposed, unanimous.
So the board of selectmen agrees with the, all the Finance Committee's recommendation?
Yes. All right, uh, town managers report, I've got, I got a whole bunch of papers, uh, I got a whole bunch of, uh, I had paper here. Wait, nope, I got nothing. What do you got, Scott?
You good?
We're getting there.
Let's see, what did I do all week? All right, so most of the, most of the past week was still spent, you know, finishing up, um, town meeting preparation, finishing up the warrant articles, um, chasing down some of the, um, you know, the ABCAM issue and stuff like that, meeting with Finance Committee. Uh, today, this morning, I started off, we did a, um, public service announcement. Uh, Sean Riley, Matt Sala, and Marty Go Lightly and myself, um, with the assistance of, uh, Kevin Tachi and ABCAM. Um, we recorded a public service announcement just explaining to everyone uh, what they can expect when they come to town meeting and when they come to, um, the elections, which are, um, the day after town meeting. Uh, basically telling them, uh, you know, we're going to come in through door eighteen, uh, how we're going to queue them up. Uh, we are expecting everyone to wear masks. If you do not have a mask, one will be provided for you. Uh, we will have hand sanitizing stations. Uh, the seating arrangement will be such that there would, will be, um, uh, three seats between every person and two rows between every row of seats will be left empty. Uh, if you come in and you're with the, uh, someone from the same household and you want to sit together, that's fine. You'll be able to do so. However, you would expect three seats to be left before the next person. Um, and we'll have plenty of volunteers to assist people and help them and, um, and show them the way in. Uh, if for some reason, if you have a medical condition or some other reason that you absolutely cannot wear a mask, uh, we'll find a spot for you that's separate from every, everywhere else, um, just so, you know, to avoid any contamination or possible contamination. Uh, as you are aware, you, uh, voted to reduce the quorum. So we did explain that in this PSA that the quorum was reduced to fifty people. However, that does not mean we only want fifty people there. If you feel as though you want to come to town meeting, then you will be welcome at town meeting. Uh, we will make arrangements. We can safely, uh, with the seating plan that we have, fit upwards of seventy people in the main room. And, um, certainly if we have overflow, we have a plan that we can put some people in the gymnasium. Um, we'll sign new cast out there, and we'll also have counters out there for the votes. Um, and we'll be able to socially distance out there also. If it gets to a certain point and we had too many people, we may have to stop and, and reschedule for a day when we can have an outdoors meeting. But we don't anticipate that to be a problem. The, the, the plan is, is, is we'll start right at seven, um, assuming we have fifty people. Um, you know, obviously, we're going to give everybody who's in line a chance to check in. You won't check in by precincts. Um, all the registrars and all the checking people will do any precincts, so whichever one you're from, as you come in, you'll go up to that table. The registrars will be sitting there. They'll be protected by a piece of plexiglass that we had made for them. Um, and you follow just your normal routine, tell them where you're from, uh, name and address, and go on in and, and find a seat. Uh, there'll be seats for the selectmen up in the front, seats for members of the Finance Committee, uh, myself and, um, town council, and some others will be up on the stage. That's about it. But, you know, it's sort of a similar thing. We wanted, in the PSA, we also reminded everybody that at the following day, on Tuesday, the twenty-third, will be, um, voting day. And they'll be held at the Emerald Hall this year. They won't be held at the high school. Um, and it'll be similar when you walk in, um, we prefer, you know, please wear your mask. If not, we'll have someone there to give you a mask. There'll be hand sanitizing stations, um, you'll, uh, check in, and, um, there'll be people to help direct you which way to come in and which way to go out. Uh, again, if you, if you feel more comfortable, you're welcome to do the absentee voting. Uh, you can come to town hall. Uh, we're still taking it. You can ask for the ballot and fill out the ballot, and you can leave it there. Uh, and if anybody has any questions on that, please just contact the town clerk's office. Uh, the second half of our PSA this morning, we actually did, uh, similar to what we just did with you, um, what we just did together, is we went through, um, all the articles and we sort of gave a quick explanation of what the articles and, 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 um, an explanation of how the budget had to be reworked, how, um, you know, everybody had worked pretty hard to get down to a really good budget, and then, uh, COVID decided to come in and make more work for us. Um, so we did that, um, and that was the second in a series of PSAs that I've been doing. I did another one earlier, um, af- just after we had opened up town hall with, uh, Kevin Tachi, where, uh, it was just really an introduction where I wanted to introduce myself to, um, the public because I hadn't done so yet and to let them know the town meeting, uh, the town hall was back opened up. What else have I been up to? Let's see. I do have a motions meeting scheduled for later this week, so we've been working with council. We're going to deal with that on Wednesday. We're going to go through, um, with the, uh, town clerk and the town accountant and, uh, the treasurer, myself, town council. And we'll all get together and we'll just go right down that warrant and have a dry run of it. Um, let's see. Oh, I'm going to be looking for a new sealer of weights and measures. So if somebody's retiring soon and doesn't have anything else to do, wants to be a sealer of weights and measures. They want to throw in an application. Um, and that's it. You know, I'm starting to, you know, I'm trying to stop putting a plan together because I'm, I'm very, um, hopeful that we are going to get through, um, town meeting, town elections. I'm, I'm optimistic that we have a, a solid budget and a solid plan that's going to carry us through, um, at least into, well into the fall, uh, when, you know, when we'll start working pretty quickly on, um, you know, the articles, because obviously, the minute we can start having public hearings again, we want to get ready to have, um, you know, zoning articles and, and obviously these road acceptance articles and anything else we would, you know, have to do at a fall town meeting. Um, you know, I'm also putting together what some of my objectives are going to be for this board. You know, to present to this board over the course of the, you know, the next year with, um, you know, a series of HR policies, um, you know, we really have to rethink our human resources and our policies and, and our, um, our, our HR manual, uh, procurement policies, um, want to work on getting together this Affordable Housing Trust program, uh, getting that document. I'd like to have that ready, um, if it isn't ready yet, but to have something ready for the fall town meeting on that. Um, we want to make sure we have some good adopted and, um, uh, best management practices for our financial policies. And we want to put together a, um, a capital committee, a new capital committee, a, I think that's something that this board would like to see, and I, I probably maybe get a couple of members, um, who would want to sit on that too. So that's, um, that's what's coming up. And, um, I, I do know that if you wanted to watch, um, I believe, tonight at seven-thirty, and you're just going to miss it unless you, you get off quick, on Comcast and Verizon at seven-thirty, and then again at ten-fifteen tonight, um, the, uh, the show that I was, the PSA will be on, and it runs about an hour.
Okay, um, gentlemen, this will be my last meeting. Uh, I have some personal business that I have to attend to. Uh, I'm leaving, uh, Abington on the eighteenth. I won't be back until the twenty-sixth. Um, so I will not be at town meeting. If Leanne's watching, Leanne, I apologize, apologize because I told you I'd up at a town meeting and at, uh, the election, and unfortunately, uh, something else came up that I have to take care of. And again, I apologize for that. It's been a pleasure working with all of you. I'm not going anywhere. I'll be back, like I said, after the twenty-sixth. Um, and looking forward to, uh, the new board, uh, and I don't know what you're doing, but after the twenty-third, we can, maybe we'll go out, Kenner, get one of those, uh, outdoor tables, celebrate a little bit. But anyway, just so y'all know that, and that, so I don't know if you want to call, um, and Scott, you may want to talk to the board about that, about, um, calling a meeting. Um, we used to meet, can I, always before a town meeting, we'd always meet ahead of time, right? And I don't, because with Zoom and everything, I don't think we could do that now, but.
No, we, we used to stay in session in case something came up on town meeting four and we could vote, you know.
Yeah, I, I believe you do want to call, and not that you will have a meeting, but I think you want to have that ability. So I think you would probably call for a meeting and at town meeting.
At town meeting, so, so, um.
I will have Nancy post that.
Yeah, and I'd ask, you know, if, if Tim has any questions, Tim, I would, as he's the co-chairman, I would have him, at least going forward until the election, um, you know, do any of that stuff. So, Tim, that okay with you?
Yep.
I mean, I, I don't know how everybody thinks, but I think everybody would be okay with that, so. All right, anything else?
Um, do they need help at, uh, town meeting, like organizing or checking people in or moving chairs around? Because I can get there early if that's the case.
I, 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 I would check with Leanne. I don't believe that, I, I think that she's probably fairly well-covered at town meeting, but we can always double check, and I, I do know that the next day, you know, many hands will probably make light work for her, because I know that was kind of her big concern was, um, you know, the same volunteers typically do the election, which will be the, obviously, the next morning. So if anybody's available for that, but, um, I know that they've been working on and, and working hard with the volunteers, and, and from what she said, though, that they're all very eager and looking forward to, um, you know, doing this anyways, the ones who always do.
The good thing is that in previous town meetings, we've had to afterwards stay and fold up all the chairs. We're not going to do that in this, in this room anymore. That's a good thing.
Uh, that's, yeah, that's true. All right.
I think the only other thing, um, Tom, is, is you probably, um, just on the off shot, that you don't do it on the twenty-second. My guess is you will be wanting to meet on the twenty-ninth.
Well, that won't be me, because I, I, the election's the twenty-third, so again.
Yeah, that's, you know, I, I guess I'm putting that more towards, uh, you know, Tim and Kevin and Jim.
Yep.
So are we going to be continuing meeting every week or usually with the, what, second and fourth?
Yeah, I, I, I don't think you have to, myself, um, for a lot of reasons, but.
I mean, next week is town meeting, so.
The, yeah, but the only, the only reason, like, i- if you wanted to reconvene just to set your board, because then you're getting into July sixth, which I don't know if you guys would rather have that long weekend of the Fourth of July weekend.
Yeah, we, we usually do the second, the second and fourth, so, and that's Fourth of July weekend. I don't think we'd want, want to meet that weekend anyway. So it'd probably be a good idea to meet on the twenty-ninth and introduce the.
Organize.
Board, reorganize the board.
Right.
And, um, and then just, we'll set the meeting schedule going forward from there.
Okay, um, one thing I just, um, I did hit back from Leanne on the early, on the early and absentee voting has been over two hundred and thirty people who have voted so far. Um, so just, anyone was looking for a number.
And, and you said the last time they could go into the town hall to vote is noon time on Monday? Is that what you said?
Yep, so, um, early voting is by mail only, and those ballots have to be returned, um, by election day. So we're getting close now. As far as absentee voting, by going into town hall, you can go in until noon time on this coming Monday.
You okay, Tim?
I may or may not. Just dropped my phone, sorry. Trying to multitask.
All right, um, anything else, gentlemen? Yeah, I just want to thank Ken and Tom for their years of dedicated service. It sounds like we won't have another meeting with either one of yous. Um, I hope both of yous continue servicing your communities wherever, however, and whatever form that takes. It's been a pleasure working with the both of yous. Well, thank you. I've, I've, I've had a pleasure too working with everybody, and, uh, it's definitely an experience. But I wish all the people that are running, uh, for this office, uh, a lot of luck. It's all about Abington. I think if you remember that, I, I think that's the most important thing, so. But I'll entertain a motion.
I'll let Ken do it. I want to stay. I want to hang out, so. I actually have a dog park meeting to go to right now, a Zoom meeting, so I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that. All those in favor? All those in favor? Aye, opposed, the eyes have it. The eyes have it. Good night, gentlemen.